Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, members of the public. Pursuant to the open public meetings act and NJ SA ten colon four. The notice of this special meeting of the Jackson Township zoning board has been published and posted in all appropriate locations.
Here.
Mr. Ricardi.
Here.
Mr. LeBac was absent, Ms. Bradley.
Here.
Mr. Najarian.
Here.
So the first order of business tonight is I need a motion to adopt to re adopt the meeting minutes and executive minutes of the January fourth two thousand and twenty three meeting of the zoning board of adjustment.
So moved.
Second.
You have a motion second. Please.
Yes.
Ms. Fritsch.
Yes.
Mr. Hurley.
Yes.
Mr. Costanzo.
Yes.
Mr. Ricardi.
Yes.
Ms. Bradley.
Yes.
Mr. Najarian.
Yes.
Secondly, I'm going to request a brief executive session, so I'm going to go ahead and articulate a motion for executive session that I'll need made. Whereas the zoning board of the township of Jackson is subject to certain requirements of the open plug meetings act. Whereas the open public meetings act NJ SA ten four dash twelve provides that an executive session not open to the public may be held for certain specified purposes when authorized by resolution, whereas it is necessary for the zoning board of the township of Jackson to discuss in session not open to the public. Matters relating to the item or items authorized by NJ SA ten four dash twelve B. That matter here being anticipated anticipated litigation as well as a general discussion subjects the attorney client privilege now therefore be resolved by the zoning board of the township of Jackson to enter into executive session for discussion of anticipated litigation and a general discussion pursuant to the attorney client privilege.
I need a motion.
Move to go into executive session.
Second. Motion second. Please.
Mr. Book.
Yes.
Ms. Fritsch.
Yes.
Mr. Hurley.
Yes.
Mr. Costanzo.
Yes.
Mr. Ricardi.
Yes.
Ms. Bradley.
Yes.
Mr. Najarian.
Yes.
Good to go. So it was brought to my attention that there are members of the public here. I do want to make sure that you're aware that there are no applications being heard tonight. Those applications will be carried. This is solely an administrative meeting that was noticed as a special meeting.
It's the latter.
That you're going to re. Yes, that meeting, the the applications that are on for tonight are being rescheduled.
Okay.
You won't get another notice, so why don't you wait till after executive session we'll go through and we'll give you the new date of the the actual hearing, okay? For that particular application.
We're going to be on about ten fifteen.
No, no more than, yeah, no more than ten fifteen minutes.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Hour.
This is.
Thank you. Pursuant to the open public meetings act and NJ SA ten colon four. The notice of this special meeting of the Jackson Township zoning board has been published and posted in all appropriate locations.
Mr. Costanzo.
Here.
Mr. Ricardi.
Here.
Mr. LeBac was absent, Ms. Bradley.
Here.
Mr. Najarian.
Here.
So the first order of business tonight is I need a motion to adopt to re adopt the meeting minutes and executive minutes of the January fourth two thousand and twenty three meeting of the zoning board of adjustment.
So moved.
Second. You have a motion second. Please.
Mr. Book.
Yes.
Ms. Fritsch.
Yes.
Mr. Hurley.
Yes.
Mr. Costanzo.
Yes.
Mr. Ricardi.
Yes.
Ms. Bradley.
Yes.
Mr. Najarian.
Yes.
Secondly, I'm going to request a brief executive session, so I'm going to go ahead and articulate a motion for executive session that I'll need made. Whereas the zoning board of the township of Jackson is subject to certain requirements of the open plug meetings act. Whereas the open public meetings act NJ SA ten four dash twelve provides that an executive session not open to the public may be held for certain specified purposes when authorized by resolution, whereas it is necessary for the zoning board of the township of Jackson to discuss in session not open to the public. Matters relating to the item or items authorized by NJ SA ten four dash twelve B. That matter here being anticipated anticipated litigation as well as a general discussion subjects the attorney client privilege now therefore be resolved by the zoning board of the township of Jackson to enter into executive session for discussion of anticipated litigation and a general discussion pursuant to the attorney client privilege.
I need a motion.
Move to go into executive session.
Second. Motion second. Please.
Mr. Book.
Yes.
Ms. Fritsch.
Yes.
Mr. Hurley.
Yes.
Mr. Costanzo.
Yes.
Mr. Ricardi.
Yes.
Ms. Bradley.
Yes.
Mr. Najarian.
Yes.
So it was brought to my attention that there are members of the public here. I do want to make sure that you're aware that there are no applications being heard tonight. Those applications will be carried. This is solely an administrative meeting that was noticed as a special meeting.
It's the latter.
That you're going to re. Yes, that meeting, the the applications that are on for tonight are being rescheduled.
Okay.
You won't get another notice, so why don't you wait till after executive session we'll go through and we'll give you the new date of the the actual hearing, okay? For that particular application.
Oh, we're going to be on about ten fifteen.
No, no more than, yeah, no more than ten fifteen minutes.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Hour.
This is.
Thank you. Good to go. So it was brought to my attention that there are members of the public here. I do want to make sure that you're aware that there are no applications being heard tonight. Those applications will be carried. This is solely an administrative meeting that was noticed as a special meeting.
It's the latter.
That you're going to re. Yes, that meeting, the the applications that are on for tonight are being rescheduled.
Okay.
You won't get another notice, so why don't you wait till after executive session we'll go through and we'll give you the new date of the the actual hearing, okay? For that particular application.
Oh, we're going to be on about ten fifteen.
No, no more than, yeah, no more than ten fifteen minutes.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Hour.
This is.
Thank you. Good to go. So it was brought to my attention that there are members of the public here. I do want to make sure that you're aware that there are no applications being heard tonight. Those applications will be carried. This is solely an administrative meeting that was noticed as a special meeting.
It's the latter.
That you're going to re. Yes, that meeting, the the applications that are on for tonight are being rescheduled.
Okay.
You won't get another notice, so why don't you wait till after executive session we'll go through and we'll give you the new date of the the actual hearing, okay? For that particular application.
Oh, we're going to be on about ten fifteen.
No, no more than, yeah, no more than ten fifteen minutes.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Hour.
This is.
Thank you. Good to go. So it was brought to my attention that there are members of the public here. I do want to make sure that you're aware that there are no applications being heard tonight. Those applications will be carried. This is solely an administrative meeting that was noticed as a special meeting.
It's the latter.
That you're going to re. Yes, that meeting, the the applications that are on for tonight are being rescheduled.
Okay.
You won't get another notice, so why don't you wait till after executive session we'll go through and we'll give you the new date of the the actual hearing, okay? For that particular application.
Oh, we're going to be on about ten fifteen.
No, no more than, yeah, no more than ten fifteen minutes.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Hour.
This is.
Thank you. Good to go. So it was brought to my attention that there are members of the public here. I do want to make sure that you're aware that there are no applications being heard tonight. Those applications will be carried. This is solely an administrative meeting that was noticed as a special meeting.
It's the latter.
That you're going to re. Yes, that meeting, the the applications that are on for tonight are being rescheduled.
Okay.
You won't get another notice, so why don't you wait till after executive session we'll go through and we'll give you the new date of the the actual hearing, okay? For that particular application.
Oh, we're going to be on about ten fifteen.
No, no more than, yeah, no more than ten fifteen minutes.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Hour.
This is.
Thank you. Good to go. So it was brought to my attention that there are members of the public here. I do want to make sure that you're aware that there are no applications being heard tonight. Those applications will be carried. This is solely an administrative meeting that was noticed as a special meeting.
It's the latter.
That you're going to re. Yes, that meeting, the the applications that are on for tonight are being rescheduled.
Okay.
You won't get another notice, so why don't you wait till after executive session we'll go through and we'll give you the new date of the the actual hearing, okay? For that particular application.
Oh, we're going to be on about ten fifteen.
No, no more than, yeah, no more than ten fifteen minutes.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Hour.
This is.
Thank you. Good to go. So it was brought to my attention that there are members of the public here. I do want to make sure that you're aware that there are no applications being heard tonight. Those applications will be carried. This is solely an administrative meeting that was noticed as a special meeting.
It's the latter.
That you're going to re. Yes, that meeting, the the applications that are on for tonight are being rescheduled.
Okay.
You won't get another notice, so why don't you wait till after executive session we'll go through and we'll give you the new date of the the actual hearing, okay? For that particular application.
Oh, we're going to be on about ten fifteen.
No, no more than, yeah, no more than ten fifteen minutes.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Hour.
This is.
Thank you. Good to go. So it was brought to my attention that there are members of the public here. I do want to make sure that you're aware that there are no applications being heard tonight. Those applications will be carried. This is solely an administrative meeting that was noticed as a special meeting.
It's the latter.
That you're going to re. Yes, that meeting, the the applications that are on for tonight are being rescheduled.
Okay.
You won't get another notice, so why don't you wait till after executive session we'll go through and we'll give you the new date of the the actual hearing, okay? For that particular application.
Oh, we're going to be on about ten fifteen.
No, no more than, yeah, no more than ten fifteen minutes.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Hour.
This is.
Thank you. Good to go. So it was brought to my attention that there are members of the public here. I do want to make sure that you're aware that there are no applications being heard tonight. Those applications will be carried. This is solely an administrative meeting that was noticed as a special meeting.
It's the latter.
That you're going to re. Yes, that meeting, the the applications that are on for tonight are being rescheduled.
Okay.
You won't get another notice, so why don't you wait till after executive session we'll go through and we'll give you the new date of the the actual hearing, okay? For that particular application.
Oh, we're going to be on about ten fifteen.
No, no more than, yeah, no more than ten fifteen minutes.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Hour.
This is.
Thank you. Good to go. So it was brought to my attention that there are members of the public here. I do want to make sure that you're aware that there are no applications being heard tonight. Those applications will be carried. This is solely an administrative meeting that was noticed as a special meeting.
It's the latter.
That you're going to re. Yes, that meeting, the the applications that are on for tonight are being rescheduled.
Okay.
You won't get another notice, so why don't you wait till after executive session we'll go through and we'll give you the new date of the the actual hearing, okay? For that particular application.
Oh, we're going to be on about ten fifteen.
No, no more than, yeah, no more than ten fifteen minutes.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Hour.
This is.
Thank you. Good to go. So it was brought to my attention that there are members of the public here. I do want to make sure that you're aware that there are no applications being heard tonight. Those applications will be carried. This is solely an administrative meeting that was noticed as a special meeting.
It's the latter.
That you're going to re. Yes, that meeting, the the applications that are on for tonight are being rescheduled.
Okay.
You won't get another notice, so why don't you wait till after executive session we'll go through and we'll give you the new date of the the actual hearing, okay? For that particular application.
Oh, we're going to be on about ten fifteen.
No, no more than, yeah, no more than ten fifteen minutes.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Hour.
This is.
Thank you. Good to go. So it was brought to my attention that there are members of the public here. I do want to make sure that you're aware that there are no applications being heard tonight. Those applications will be carried. This is solely an administrative meeting that was noticed as a special meeting.
It's the latter.
That you're going to re. Yes, that meeting, the the applications that are on for tonight are being rescheduled.
Okay.
You won't get another notice, so why don't you wait till after executive session we'll go through and we'll give you the new date of the the actual hearing, okay? For that particular application.
Oh, we're going to be on about ten fifteen.
No, no more than, yeah, no more than ten fifteen minutes.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Hour.
This is.
Thank you. Good to go. So it was brought to my attention that there are members of the public here. I do want to make sure that you're aware that there are no applications being heard
Mr. Book?
Yes.
Ms. Fritsch?
Yeah.
Mr. Hurley?
Yeah.
Mr. Costanzo?
Yes.
Mr. Ricardi?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yeah.
Mr. Najarian?
Yes.
Chairman, if I may?
Go ahead.
So the reason that we're here tonight is to correct some perceived violations of the Open Public Meetings Act. Upon review and providing notice to the public, there were open, open public meeting act violations. Specifically, the Jackson Township Zoning Board was only publishing in one newspaper. Now, one newspaper is permissible and actually specifically required under the MLUL. That's the municipal land use law. We are required under that statute to publish in the official newspaper of the township. And in fact, we're complying by publishing in the Asbury Park Press. What we were not complying with is the Open Public Meetings Act, which requires that we send notification to two newspapers as we were only publishing in the Asbury Park Press and not sending to another paper. So we are simply here tonight to correct the Open Public Meetings Act violations and ensure that we comply going forward. So with that said, the first thing that I'd like to do tonight is to address the zoning board meeting dates for 2022 and 2023, which I believe will need to be readopted. They were adopted July 20th, 2022. So I'm going to go through those meeting dates and I'm going to ask that we have a motion to approve those meeting dates. We are adding one meeting as the board will see and we'll get there. But this one, I'm going to ask for a roll call. Okay? Because the, the board is currently constituted as approving these meeting dates. Now, this does go into the past, but that's all right because the board can, can go back and, and, and do that because we are also approving meeting, meeting dates in the future. So what we're doing now is we're going to be approving the meeting dates for 2022 and 2023, that being the July 20th, 2022 reorganization and regular meeting. Then we have the August 3rd and August 17th, 2022 regular meetings. September 7th and 21st, 2022 meetings. The October 5th and 19th, 2022 meetings. The November 2nd and 16th, 2022 meetings. The November 30th, 2022 special meeting. The December 7th and 21st, 2022 meeting. The January 4th, 2023 reorganization and regular meeting. Those meeting minutes were just readopted by the board. The January 18th, 2023 meeting. The January 25th, 2023 special meeting. The February 1st and 15th, 2022, 23 meetings. The March 1st and 15th, 2023 meetings. The March 22nd, 2023 special meeting, which will be noticed as a special meeting. The April 5th and 19th, 2023 meetings. The May 3rd and 17th, 2023 meetings. uh the April fifth and nineteenth two thousand and twenty-three meetings, the May third and seventeenth two thousand and twenty-three meetings, the June seventh and twenty-first two thousand and twenty-three meetings, and finally, the July nineteenth two thousand and twenty-three reorganization and regular meeting, where we will only have one meeting in the month of July. So can I have a motion to approve those meeting dates, please?
We'll approve the dates just directly by calendar.
And a motion, a second roll call, please.
Mr. Book?
Yes.
Ms. Fritsch?
Yeah.
Mr. Hurley?
Yes.
Mr. Costanzo?
Yes.
Mr. Riccardi?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yeah.
Mr. Najarian?
Yes.
Just for clarification purposes, generally.
Thank you. Just for clarification purposes, generally, the first meeting is a regularly scheduled meeting. The second meeting in the month is a special meeting, but we've been handling them as regular meetings to in order to try to reduce the backlog that's been created by COVID, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Now we have to get to the business of rescheduling the applications that were scheduled for the February first meeting as well as the.
I couldn't read it literally.
All right. I was gonna do that after we reschedule these meetings. That's okay. I wanna get these meetings rescheduled, rescheduled, so we can, we'll go backward uh once I, once we finish the business. Um, all right, so uh we had several applications scheduled for February first, that meeting was canceled. Um and we need to reschedule those, so the first application uh was the Marcellus and Alyssa Brandon application, block one zero 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 two, lot twenty-four, uh that application is being carried to Jeff, I believe, March first?
Carried to March first, yes.
And that will require additional notice or no? No, that will not require additional notice. Uh the second application is twenty-eight Ashford uh block six two zero two, lot fifteen. Uh that meeting is being carried to the April nineteenth two thousand and twenty-three meeting, no additional notice is required. Third application, White Oak Properties Rental Property Holdings LLC. That is being carried to the March, I'm sorry, that's block one one five zero one, lot seven point zero two. That's being carried to the March first two thousand and twenty-three meeting, no further notice is required. The fourth application was uh John and Tracy DeRueville, that's block two three two zero two, lot thirty-one. Uh that's being carried to the March first meeting, notice is required for that particular uh application. Uh number five uh is the McChrystal application, that's block two one one zero, lot two and three. That's being carried to the April fifth two thousand and twenty-three meeting, uh no additional notice will be required. Uh then we have the sixth application, which is the Kyle Hampshire Hills Inc. Synagogue. Uh that's block five two zero two, lot one, uh that is being carried to the March twenty-second two thousand and twenty-three meeting. Notice will be required as that is a special meeting. That takes care of the February first two thousand and twenty-three agenda. We now have the February fifteenth two thousand and twenty-three agenda, uh as notice to all applications, we're going to be carried uh and we're gonna resign dates now. Uh so first we have uh Dufree Street, Paulina, that's block six five zero eight, lot two. That's being carried to the, Jeff, I think we said the April?
April fifth.
April fifth meeting?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Number two is we have the Ron Ronco Developers Incorporated, that's block two five zero six, lot twenty-one, that's also being carried to the April fifth meeting, no additional notice. Uh there will be no additional notice with regard to uh the first application, Red Dufree Street. The third application, the Walter Walter Earl Corp, uh block two two nine zero two, lot seven. That's also being carried to the April fifth meeting, that hmm hmm that must be noticed. Uh the five Denmark Lane uh application, that's number four on the list. Uh we're we're block one three six zero one, lot thirty, that's being carried to the April fifth uh meeting, uh no further notice. Uh the fifth application um, which is, I forgive my pronunciation, uh it's Kella Derbrookwood. Um and that's block six zero zero two, lot two and three. Uh that is going to be carried to the April nineteenth two thousand and twenty-three meeting, no further notice shall be required on that. Uh and then we have the uh number six, which is the Yeshiva Tefaris Tamed Bridge Partner Holdings application, block seven five zero one, lot forty-three. That is also being carried to the April nineteenth meeting, uh no further uh notice uh is required. So that takes care of the February first and February fifteenth two thousand and twenty-three agendas. All applications have been rescheduled. Great. Finally, spare with me for a moment. The last thing that I'm, we're going to do tonight is by way of motion, we're going to go back and uh in an effort to cor- correct the Open Public Meeting Act issues. We're going to adopt the meeting minutes uh from uh January fifth two thousand and twenty-two going forward. Uh and um uh I'll ask uh that a motion be made as to each meeting, someone can make the motion, second it, uh and then we can uh vote on that, okay?
So you need a motion to
to adopt.
You need a motion to adopt the January fifth twenty twenty-two meeting minutes?
So we're gonna, yes, so we're gonna start with uh the first one is a motion to adopt the meeting minutes of January fifth two thousand and twenty-two.
So moved.
Second. And a motion and a second roll call, please.
Oh, I I think we're just gonna fourth, January fifth of two thousand and twenty-two.
Twenty-two?
Yes.
You're going backwards.
We already, just for clarification purposes, the very first thing that we did was, the very first thing that we did was adopt the meeting minutes of the reorganization meeting on January fourth two thousand and twenty-three. Okay, so now we're gonna go backwards in time and we're gonna go through two thousand and twenty-two's meetings all the way up till January, I'm sorry, strike that, uh December twenty-first. Because we've adopted twenty, January fourth. We adopted January fourth, at the beginning of this meeting, we also adopted January eighteenth and January twenty-fifth. That was the first thing we did.
All do all in favor?
Yes.
Okay, so we got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Any opposed?
There seems to be a issue with the procedural here, but did we adopt the January fourth meeting minutes? Two thousand and twenty-three?
Is that a day or day? Don't mean to that.
No, we didn't on that one, we took a roll call, cuz the entire board was there.
Roll call. Mr. Mark, to the president of businesses, and I have any motion to readopt meeting minutes and executive minutes of January fourth, twenty-three, we need to talk about
That's okay. So we did do a roll call in that particular meeting, because uh the entire board was there, okay? Um anyway, uh so we'll get back to the business at hand. Uh we need a uh motion to adopt the meeting minutes of January nineteenth two thousand and twenty-two.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Opposed vote.
Uh we need a motion to adopt the meeting uh and exec- the meeting, the regular meeting minutes and executive session minutes of February second two thousand and twenty-two.
So moved.
Second.
All approved?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody again?
Okay, uh motion to adopt the meeting minutes of February sixteenth two thousand and twenty-two.
So moved.
Second.
Everybody approved?
Aye.
Everybody against?
Uh motion to adopt the meeting minutes of March second two thousand and twenty-two.
So moved.
Second.
All approved?
Aye.
Anybody against? No.
Uh a motion to adopt the March sixteenth two thousand and twenty-two regular meeting minutes and executive session minutes, please.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
Motion to adopt the April sixth two thousand and twenty-two meeting minutes?
So moved.
Everybody approved?
Aye.
Motion to adopt the April twentieth two thousand and twenty-two meeting minutes, please?
So moved.
Everybody approved?
Aye.
Still doing again.
Motion to approve the May fourth two thousand and twenty-two regular and executive session minutes, please?
So moved.
Everybody approved?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody against?
Motion to uh adopt the May eighteenth two thousand and twenty-two meeting minutes?
So moved.
All approved?
Aye.
Everybody against?
Uh motion to adopt the June first two thousand and twenty-two meeting minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Everybody agree?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody against?
Motion to adopt the June fifteenth two thousand and twenty-two meeting minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Everybody approves?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to uh adopt the July twentieth two thousand and twenty-two meeting minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Everybody approved?
Aye.
Everybody against?
We're getting there. Motion to approve the August third two thousand and twenty-two meeting minutes?
So moved.
I'm sorry, that's a motion to adopt those.
Yes.
Adopt.
Move to that.
Apologies.
Second.
Everybody approved?
Aye.
Aye. Nobody against?
Motion to adopt the August seventeenth two thousand and twenty-two meeting minutes?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Everybody against?
Motion to approve the September seventh two thousand and twenty-two meeting minutes?
So moved.
And just for clarification purposes, that's to adopt those minutes?
Everybody approves?
Aye.
Anybody against?
Motion to adopt the September twenty-first two thousand and twenty-two meeting?
So moved.
Everybody approved?
Aye.
Anybody against?
Motion to adopt the October fifth two thousand and twenty-two meeting minutes?
So moved.
Everybody approved?
Aye.
Anybody against?
Motion to adopt the October nineteenth two thousand and twenty-two regular and executive session minutes?
So moved.
Second.
All in agreement?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody against?
All right, motion to approve the November second two thousand and twenty-two meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in agreement?
Aye.
Aye. Nobody against?
Sorry. Motion to adopt the November sixteenth two thousand and twenty-two meeting minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Everybody in agreement?
Aye.
All right, we need a motion to adopt the November thirtieth two thousand and twenty-two special and executive meeting minutes, please?
So moved.
All in favor?
Second.
Second.
Aye.
Let's do a second there, chief.
Anybody against?
Okay. We have a motion to adopt the December seventh two thousand and twenty-two meeting minutes, please?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody against?
And can we please have a motion to adopt the December twenty-first two thousand and twenty-two regular and executive session meeting minutes?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody against?
That's the end of it.
We got through that.
Just to clarify, in case I said approved, all those motions were to adopt the meeting minutes, not to approve them.
Let's get back on schedule. All right, so we do have uh, let's see. Minutes. Right?
Yeah.
Okay.
We have the meeting minutes from February fifteenth today for King reporting.
Let's get to them. That's the bottom.
So we have minutes.
The minutes, oh, the minutes we have. I'm talking about the vouchers, I'm sorry, I apologize.
I'm gonna get to you.
I have February, I have January twenty-fifth. But that's it.
January eighteen.
January eighteenth, we said. Am I?
Minutes? We don't really wish to.
I have one, but I gotta get to Jeff.
January eighteen.
All right, and a motion?
For Ja- it's January eighteenth, not the twenty-fifth?
Minutes, both.
Both?
I think January eighteen first.
January eighteenth first, then it's one.
Then the twenty-third. Move to approve the minutes for January eighteenth.
And a motion and a second need roll call, please?
Mr. Book?
Yes.
Ms. Fritsch?
Yeah.
Mr. Hurley?
Yes.
Mr. Costanzo?
Yes.
Mr. Riccardi?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yeah.
Mr. Najarian?
Yes.
Move to approve the minutes for January twenty-fifth.
A motion?
Uh that's both, just for clarification purposes, that's both regular and executive, correct?
Oh.
Or just the regular meeting?
Just the regular.
Correct.
So we have
Motion and second.
Mr. Book is the motion, and then who is the second? Ms. Bradley?
We roll call.
Mr. Book?
Yes.
Ms. Fritsch?
Yeah.
Mr. Hurley?
Yes.
Mr. Costanzo?
Yes.
Mr. Riccardi?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Mr. Najarian?
Yes.
I have two vouchers sitting in front of me here. February fifteen twenty-three. King reporting two hundred and fifty dollars and another one for a hundred and fifty. I need a motion and a second order to build.
Both of them to King reporting?
King, yeah.
Move to approve and pay both vouchers.
Second.
Mr. Book?
Yes.
Ms. Fritsch?
Yeah.
Mr. Hurley?
Yeah.
Mr. Costanzo?
Yes.
Mr. Riccardi?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Mr. Najarian?
Yes.
Anything else?
Thank you for me.
All right. Got a German, all in favor?
Aye.
Everybody opposed?